For you tonight is a presentation that Mrs. Bowser and I put together on human resources and finance. And we wanted to hit some, just some general informational areas and then as well as drill down into some costs and some possibilities as we talk through the future at RCS. So with that, we are going to move to the employee group area. And we are briefly going to go over the types of employees that we have here at RCS. Just for our public and if our board doesn't know, we are the second largest employer in the county. That is something to be proud of. We have over eight hundred employees paid on every payroll. And we also have a number of substitute and seasonal employees with coaches and substitute teachers, substitute paraprofessionals and substitute secretaries and custodians. So our groups, as you can see, are basically categorized by either certification, licensure, degree or full-time and part-time status. So we have our teacher group, those are all certified or adjunct and they are licensed. The professional group are our non-certified support staff, but they are licensed or degreed for their duties. And that is oftentimes our speech and language pathologists. It may be an occupational therapist or psychologist. Those are the professional group. Our behavior specialists fall into that category as well. We have secretaries of facilities. These are, these are non-certified support staff and they are full-time. We have our administrator category. Those are certified and non-certified and they are licensed and degreed. And then we have hourly claim and substitute employee groups. And they are non-certified support staff and they are part-time or temporary. So as we move to the, the next area that we'll talk about, these groups are categorized by two different methods of pay. And one is annualized, which means that we take their pay and we spread it throughout the calendar year, even though they may be school year employees. This often affects some of our custodians. It affects our secretaries and it also affects our teachers. The annualized staff are who we consider full-time benefited employees. They are retirement credible positions. They also receive health insurance benefits and other benefits such as long-term disability in their employee group. So you can see that the groups that fall under that, as I said, are teachers, the professionals, secretaries, facilities and administrators. The other group that we have is hourly. The hourly employee group are paid based on their hours worked in each period and are only paid during the school year. So they may be off summer and their pay is not annualized. They are just paid as they work. And their benefits received are FICA. And then we do have some groups that would be Affordable Care Act, fall under the medical category that they do receive medical option benefits. The groups that are in our hourly positions are paraprofessionals, preschool instructors, liaisons, substitutes and coaches. Fall into a little bit of a different category, but they are part of this group. Just briefly, the salary costs by group. We have those before you. Our teachers are our highest group of employees being paid with us. And that amount is sixteen million and nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. Substitute teachers are four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars in annual costs. Our support services are just under seven million and then our administrators are just over three million. With that, as we move to costs for benefits, those are before you tonight. We spend a little over four million dollars in just medical benefits. About a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in dental vision, about forty-two thousand. And then other benefits are just over the hundred thousand dollar mark. Retirement is also important to RCS. We do provide state, perp and turf benefits in retirement and valig and VIBA as options and benefits as well. We do match that and those costs are almost five million dollars a year. I just wanted to briefly bring some changes to the board, just so that you know. I'm currently out of the business officer conference. And with that, we learned about kind of the definitions that were coming up for the next school year. And I thought it would be nice for you to know what's ahead. This year, the requirement was a state minimum of forty-five percent to be spent on teacher salaries only. And next year, there is a change to that statute that requires sixty-two percent spending on teacher salaries and benefits. So they're calling it compensation now and that compensation is considered salaries and benefits. It also includes any stipend you pay or any other benefits that you might not consider necessarily insurances, but are considered benefits. And then just for your information, RCS in fiscal year twenty-three reported to the DOE and they verified our percentage was fifty-seven percent of salaries being, being what our ratio was. So as we look ahead, that sixty-two percent should be met with no problem. And then for FY twenty-four, there's a couple other changes. There's a new definition of teacher. It now will include counselors again, which it used to. And they changed it last year. They've changed that back. And then the benefits that are to be included have been defined in the statute and they do include life LTD and health insurances, as well as a couple of other categories.
Karen?
Yes?
Did you say that fifty-seven percent of the two thousand twenty-three reporting was teacher salaries that did not include benefits?
Correct.
Okay.
Nor did it include the new definition of teacher, which would mean it didn't include counselors and such.
Just want to make sure I heard that right.
Do you know what percentage we would have been at this year if it were included salaries and benefits?
I think that we will probably be in the seventies. My, my, I want to say somewhere between seventy-four and seventy-six percent, but that is my guesstimate. So don't hold me to that, but I think we will be somewhere in that, that lower to mid-seventies at minimum.
Thank you.
Okay, the budgetary overview of expenses. I just wanted to quickly go over this. It's important to see where our money goes. In our education fund, you can see that over eighty-two percent of that is salary and benefits for all of our staff. And then you can see our next piece is fourteen percent goes to the operations fund. Just a note and a frame of reference that that transfer originated from line that used to be in what was formerly the general fund. And that is a statutory allowable transfer. It was expected when they passed the legislation and we are under the fifteen percent threshold. That is your maximum for that transfer, at least at this point in time. That also includes all of your utilities and your insurance costs and as well as your custodial costs and salaries. About half of the technology costs that are non-instructional as far as staff. And then all of your central administration costs with the exception of curriculum. So then in the operations fund, it looks a little bit different. There you have thirty-four percent of the expenditures being salary and benefits. And that's because the operations fund is made up of not just your central administration and your custodial, but also your facilities, your transportation and your bus replacement funds. So that does look very different from the education fund. All right, as we move on, the general overview of grants also looks the same. I apologize, the legend doesn't want to come through on this one. But in our grant funds, we have about forty-seven percent are set aside for salaries and benefits. And then you can see those colors do align with the legends and the other, the other charts. So you can also compare it there, but there is a difference in how we spend grant funds. That's a lot of the funds have limitations on what's allowable in them. Moving on to ADN, just a brief history of ADN. There's a chart there for you to see what we are currently facing. You will note that the September and February counts during the two thousand sixteen, seventeen and seventeen, eighteen years stagnated in the collapse of both counts. That is simply because we did not have a February count. But you will see that we have not quite plateaued in our loss of students every year. And that's something that as we look at expenditures and what funds are available to us with the dollars following the child, that is something we always have to keep in mind in looking at next year. Breaking that down into financials, there's a chart for you that tells you each count. And then they reconcile the numbers to the funding every six months. So you can see what that means in dollars and cents. And we have lost over two million dollars, nearly two point five million dollars just in student count loss from year to year since two thousand thirteen. One other thing that I wanted to kind of look at and reference in the ADN, I wanted to include just our general teacher ratios as we look at our county. The ADN does include pre-K with these numbers. They're a little bit lower if we take pre-K out. So you can see average in community schools, we have an average class size of fourteen point two-two percent. I will say that that is all of our teachers. So we do have a lot of interventions. We have some instructional coaches and positions that are teachers, but may not be in their own classroom per se. So I just wanted to bring that to you to be aware of as we talk through what we do here at RCS. So I'm going to turn the next part of the presentation over to Mrs. Bowser and she'll go over some information on our staff from the HR side.
Thank you, Karen. Can you guys, you guys can hear me okay?
Can you guys hear Rebecca?
Can you guys hear me? I'm hearing myself back through the phone too. Well, I guess she'll, she'll probably hear it. So, okay. So what, you know, in taking a look at since, since coming and, and being able to just see things from a different vantage point sometimes from coming from the outside world in, I've also been a part of some wonderful collaboration and discussion input where, you know, if you really start to hear the commonalities of some of the things, there, there are certainly some and what the needs are possibly for our, our school system. So in, in hearing some of that, I thought, you know, we, I really want to start taking a look at some of this data and really start extracting some of the crucial data points to be able to consider what possible solutions could be put into place moving forward. So one of the things I started looking at was doing measurables on our teaching experience. And you can see on the right side, the biggest colored version is zero to five years of experience. That's just over thirty-six percent of our staff. That, that part's hard to see from back here. But the zero to five scale is thirty-six percent. That has certainly increased in time. And our, our average age of our staff has also gotten younger, which definitely correlates with the teaching experience. Six to ten, which is the darker blue on the right side, is twelve point seven percent of our staff. And then the orange, which is eleven to fifteen years of teaching experience. And again, when I say teaching experience, that's a collection of all experience, whether that means what they've gained here at Richmond or elsewhere. It's all experience that, that is recognized. So the orange is eleven to fifteen years of experience, which is right at ten percent. So basically, zero to fifteen is sixty percent of our staff. And then you can see sixteen to twenty is eleven percent. Twenty-one to twenty-five is just shy of fourteen percent. The green, twenty-six to thirty is seven point four percent. And then at the top on the left is thirty-plus years of experience at eight point six percent. So taking that further, then what I also began to look at was what does that mean as far as our salary is concerned? Because since, since arriving, I have heard a lot about what, at the middle tier. And I thought, okay, what does, what does that mean? What is that defined at? So really, once I started taking a look at this, this data, on the left, you can see years of experience and I've just broken it down by zero to five. We have a hundred and eighteen teachers that are in that category. And obviously, the percentage which was just shown on the previous slide is thirty-six point four. And the average salary from zero to five is forty-three thousand, two hundred and one dollars and sixty. Now, when I saw that, I thought, how? Because our beginning teacher salary is forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty. Well, the adjunct positions are included in that. And here in a couple slides, I did remove those to just be relative also. However, those are a teaching position that we had to utilize because of their professional experience in the field that correlated to be able to, to be in that teaching position. Those were not otherwise filled and they are, you know, some, for example, we have one in a life skills. I think at one point, we had a veteran in a life skills course. Or we had a, we actually have a previous teacher that just did not want to renew their license, that rather be on the adjunct side of it. So a non-licensed, however, is filling the adjunct role, a music teacher, I believe, as well. So then also looking six to ten, the average is forty-four thousand, nine oh two, which a difference from the zero years of experience is one thousand, seven hundred and one dollars or just shy of four percent. So what you're seeing there is somebody with six to ten years is on average making seventeen hundred dollars more than somebody coming in with zero years of experience. Moving forward, eleven to fifteen, we have just shy of ten percent of our staff. And on average, they're making forty-eight thousand, nine thirty-four or fifty-seven hundred more than a beginning teacher, which is thirteen point two-seven percent increase from zero years. And then you can start seeing the other buckets, sixteen to twenty, twenty-one to twenty-five. So at sixteen to twenty is when I really started seeing a different shift as far as the percentage points from zero years of experience. So from sixteen to twenty, I saw an average salary of fifty-seven thousand. A couple things about that. One, it's on average about fourteen thousand dollars more from a beginning teacher, which is thirty-two percent. But also that meets and exceeds the state average of salary as well. So there were a couple data points in looking at that. And then as it goes down, you know, twenty-one to twenty-five is on average nineteen thousand more or forty-five percent higher than beginning teacher. Twenty-six to thirty is on average sixty-eight thousand or twenty-five thousand from beginning teacher or just shy of sixty percent more from zero years of experience. Thirty-one to thirty-five, you're seeing on average make seventy-three thousand. Three sixty-six, which is on average thirty thousand more or seventy percent increase. And then the last bucket, thirty-six plus. And you may be asking yourself, well, how do they make on average seventy-one thousand where the higher tier makes a little bit more? It's the breakdown. Also, a lot of these people were on the old matrix. If you remember, it was a vertical and a horizontal matrix. I think when probably, when everything was probably a little bit more easier for everyone to follow. You know, teachers, people placing them on the schedule, the administrators hiring at the building level. But the thirty-one to thirty-five would also probably have more heavy-weighted masters, which were compensated in that horizontal alignment for additional educational or credit experience awarded. So that's probably why you're seeing a little bit higher there. Then also looking, I thought, okay, I really want to look at this in different brackets and buckets, just to see if it still stands out. So I, I separated the zero years. You can see that there's, there are fourteen percent or forty-five of our staff, forty-five members at fourteen percent make, or at the beginning teacher. And you can really see, again, this includes those adjuncts, which would all be technically under zero years, even though they have at least four years of field experience, they would be considered zero years of teaching experience. So you can see that's what brought that average down below that beginning teacher threshold of forty-three, two fifty, because the average including them is forty-two thousand, seven forty-three. But then I, I segmented it based off one to three years of experience. We have fifteen percent of our staff. And you can see on average for one to three years, and I thought this, this was interesting, on average make six hundred and sixteen dollars more or less than a percent and a half more than a zero-year teacher. Four to six, we have eight point three percent of our staff. On average, they're making a thousand dollars more or two percent, two point four percent higher than a zero-year of experience. Seven to ten, on average made twenty-two hundred dollars or five percent. So if I am ten years of experience, I am making on average twenty-two hundred dollars more than a zero, zero experienced educator at five point two-two percent. Eleven to fifteen, again, that bracket, ten percent, about sixty-one hundred or fourteen point three-three. And again, you can see then that division of the sixteen to twenty, you really start to see more of above. Again, though, that is directly correlated because more of that bracket came from that old salary schedule. That was more understandable and it incremented based off of years of experience or it certainly recognized years of experience and then additional, additional degree or education. So what I looked at this was, that helped me begin to define what that middle tier was. And I know Kelly and I have had conversation about that, saying, you know, to me in the mo, my mind, middle meant in the middle as far as years of experience or whatever it may be. Where really what you're seeing is it's more so zero to fifteen that has really been caught or lagging, if you will, to some of the area averages, state averages and even internal, that the lack of keeping up with that beginning to what the average is here or even to the, the high side. So that really helped me kind of start to define it. This is that slide that shows without those adjuncts, what it looks like. And adjuncts and miscellaneous, I did put that in there because Career Tech has always historically been able to provide more or less an adjunct, if you will. And those are looked at a little bit differently than the new term adjunct that the state has defined. But you can see from there, by pulling those out, the average for the zero to five is above that forty-three, two fifty, which it should be. But really look at that, zero to five without the adjunct in there, on average make forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars, which is two hundred and twenty dollars more than that beginning forty-three, two fifty amount. So what does that mean? Well, again, like I said, I wanted to start trying to define what that middle tier was. Because some of the things that I have received as far as just hearing and listening and taking that input is we, we need to begin to have solutions to, to this problem. I think we all have said, okay, we need to take a look at what our solution can be or the middle tier. The three components that I have heard highlighted as a common theme is it would really be nice to, one, address the middle tier. Two, to be able to award additional compensation to further pursuit of education, right? Like they used to, that horizontal matrix. And three, I would say the other is everybody really misses the salary schedule. Whether that be people looking that we're trying to attract, where it's easy for us to say, oh, that's where I'd be. Yes, this is worth my time or no, thank you. I've often said that when hiring somebody with eight years of experience, I, I have that, oh, this is not going to be fun. Because it's very hard and you'll see further as we go why it's so challenging because it's been so restrictive, our options have been so restrictive to be able to competitively go after them. And I, and I will just say, I'll jump ahead just slightly. It's because the beginning teacher salary at a competitive school is more than what our eight-year, ten-year, twelve-year teachers make. And that puts us already behind, especially trying to get the importance of the certified teacher in front of our students. It presents itself challenges already from just that beginning initial hiring stage.
And Mrs. Bowser, I apologize to interject.
I do want to do a little, that's amazing.
Just to, for clarity, when you say that of the conversations you've had, these are the conversations you've had with our educators throughout our corporation as you've been visiting and very much similar to what I heard when I visited with teachers earlier.
Yes, I would say probably in, in varying degrees of differences. I have heard it from the HR mobile visits as I've sat down with educators and other staff members, support staff members, whether it be one-on-one. I've heard the advocacy from our association at our, our discussion table. I've heard from the advocacy and just in some of the other dialogues that I've had with representatives and, and our, and our teachers. So it's just been on a varying degree of, you know, we heard it here. I'm, I'm trying to think, most recently at our board meeting, we, we heard Mr. Ronnie Kane advocated. So it's just, it's a common theme. And when you start hearing that commonality, such as we heard with support staff, our paraprofessionals, there is a need and to address that. Well, as we brought to you a couple of months ago, that was our step one plan. And we are, we have a tiered solution to try to be able to also offer additional solutions to be able to attract and retain our paraprofessionals. Because I hear that's a common theme that our educators need to be able to educate our students. So in hearing those commonalities, that's what I've been trying to say, okay, hearing all of that, what can be a possible solution?
And that's consistent with what I heard while being out meeting with teachers along with, as I've expressed publicly during the last board meeting, as well as even during the celebration of excellence with our educators, student behavior, student treatment. But if there is that commonality and that theme, it is a middle tier, which as I understand, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, that's been a topic of conversation for years here in our corporation. And so to know that
That's what I understand.
That we are zeroing in and, and being able to pinpoint and also address some of these, these matters as you'll continue with the presentation. And I think just again, an example of, of us keeping our ear to the ground.
And I think it's important to hear, receive that input, but then we have to put action behind it. And the reason I'm here today is obviously this corresponds directly with the budget. But also I have began receiving resignations. And when I came into this position, the amount of open positions that we had to seek to fill. And by that point, we were already behind. Because, you know, when you're, you're looking to, to get the very best in front of our students and we have some of the absolute best, you need to get ahead of that because other schools are doing the same thing and we don't, you know, the pool is already, it's, it's not a large lake, you know, and it's ever decreasing. And we want to be able to make sure that we can do what we can do to provide solutions to get the best educators in our, in front of our students and to keep the great educators that we have in front of our students. So as I started getting these resignations, I thought, no, no. And then also, you know, the state budget was just released. So, and it was in the middle of the night and I literally was looking at it one evening. It's about eleven, eleven-thirty. And I thought, this isn't, this, this isn't good. And trying to advocate for our school and saying, you have, like, go back to the drawing table. Don't leave the session with it this way. And then the following twenty-four hours later, and they worked into the night, in the middle of the night. And so it was released on what they call runs, financial runs. And taking a look at that data, and you'll see that a little bit more, that was just released, obviously, with the legislators coming out of session and adopting their two-year budget. So now we have a better predicament of what our, what our finances potentially could look like as well and utilizing trend data to, to reflect that. And I wanted to come out of the gate and hearing, okay, if these are, if, if this is the con- Um, and I wanted to come out of the gate and hearing, okay, if these are, if thi- if this is the commonality of the concern across the board um, with everybody, budget was just released. Well, I would like to be the first to say I wanna reserve uh, all the funds that I can to help address this problem and to attract and retain. And I, I've often said the best way to attract staff is to retain, retain our staff. So with that, and with not wanting to bring resignations to you in two weeks at our business meeting, um, I thought we, we have to put the action in place. Um, because time is of, of the essence, I truly do, I do believe that. Um, so how can we do that? It's a, it's a balance that you often want to make sure that you're trying, I often say balance is the key. Um, that honoring what's coming up as our collective bargaining um, session, that we have that upcoming. But then also looking at, okay, what tools are in, I often call, you know, a tool chest or a two-belt, tool belt. What are some tools that we have that we could potentially utilize since time is of the essence as well? Um, and so in no way, you know, is this in any way to hinder, because I, I do truly believe in that process and I'm looking forward to collaborating further. But what I'm saying too is through all those collaboration, this is certainly, I know, a high point of concern from, for everybody. So what tools do we have available to us that we can begin to take action and address the concern? Well, that brings me to supplemental payments. So um, beginning for school years after June thirtieth of twenty-two, so really beginning this school year for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The legislative body per IC twenty dash twenty-eight dash nine dash one point five. It allows for increases or increments in teacher salaries, supplemental payment, differentiated amounts, duties of Indiana Education Employment Relations Board. So basically what they're saying is, we're going to permit you, schools, the use of supplemental payments to be able to address some of these needs. Um, and as I said, it, it's um, it began really for July first of this, of twenty-two for the twenty-three school year. Um, and I know in, in discussing that um, with our association, you know, and I said, certainly wanna make sure it's used with the best intention because I don't wanna further cause any gaps which are already existing and I don't want to escalate um, the problem as what I started to find within our quote-unquote salary matrix, if you will. So certainly a great deal of um, discernment was taken when trying to figure out how to utilize what we've been utilizing so far. Um, and we, we have, for example, special education teachers. We are um, very much must follow the IEPs that are developed or we're going to land ourselves in another liability case. So to be able to attract within the constraints that I have, how can I utilize supplemental payments, for example, to award a specialized position? Uh, so that's an example of one of, uh, that we've used so far to be able to attract. Um, also, I think it's important to notice that this sup- the section of supplemental uh, payment that is provided here is not subject to the collective bargaining process, but um, but is, is, is open for the discussion of that. Um, so what can you, what can you use them for? It's really a very broad base. It's increases or increments um, based on the following factors or a combination therefore of number of years of teaching experience. Well, that's something we've seen that definitely has, that sparked my interest because that's what we're up against with one of the concerns. Additional content area degrees and or credit hours. Well, that sparked my interest because of the three components that I've heard, the common theme, that was, that was one that I heard. Um, because right now I think what I, I've heard is people say, well, if you leave and come back, you, you can make more. Um, and one of the, you know, is somewhat true, but also trying to honor again our current educators. Because again, the best way to attract is to retain. Um, that was also understandably so addressed in our, in our contract. Um, moving on, evaluation results, assignment of instructional leadership roles, the academic needs of students. I can certainly tell you, it's the academic needs of our students to put a certified teacher um, in front of them. Um, subject or subjects taught by a given teacher, such as special education or the hard-to-find science teachers. Importance of retaining a given teacher as a school corporation. Need to attract an individual with specific qualifications to fill the teaching vacancies, which we're trying to, before they become vacant, to retain, um, or if you're offering a new program or class. So. Sorry, that's sometimes this is. There we go. Um, also, you can provide differential increases or increments to reduce the gap between the school corporation's minimum teacher salary and the average of the school corporation's minimum and maximum teacher salaries. Well, that, that stood out because that's what I think everybody from what I have said, or I have heard since being here, has said that there, that's understood that that does need to be addressed. And then allow teachers currently employed by the school corporation to receive a salary adjusted in compensation to starting base salaries. So that's where I think that's an important note too. This isn't, um, you, you can do it one of two ways. You can do it outside and separate from the base or add it to the base. The difference is, for example, that the ones that have been awarded to attract uh, educators with certain content area. Um, it's kept separate from the base because it was important to me that I didn't want to further uh, provide additional outliers, if you will, or obstacles to try to help correct some of this. So we have kept those separate, the current stipends that have been awarded through the supplemental payment language. But what you're going to see is um, a recommendation to utilize the supplemental payment as an increase to help correct this quote-unquote middle tier, which I think is shown definition of it's more about the zero to fifteen range possibly, um, to be able to help to have some sort of compensation model that is um, separated by years of experience. But then also to try to find a way to begin awarding again that uh, degree or content area additional um, credit hours. Um, so. Um, so what you're going to see here is the, the utilization of the supplemental payment, that tool in our tool belt, right? To be able to say to our staff, we want to retain you. We know the need of keeping certified staff in front of our students. And so this is a plan that actually starts to um, make that uh, realized. What I will tell you is it's a perfectly imperfect way to begin to address this as a, as a overall problem. Okay, this did not create itself overnight. It's been the last decade making. We're not going to correct it overnight. This is not like one fell swoop, it's fixed. It's going to be a continuation, it'll be a multi-year, it'll be a multi-contract fix too. Especially when we um, are, are able to work with collaboratively um, through the collective bargaining process even. It'll be a multi-year fix. I think that's recognized and accepted by all parties. This is saying, we have to start somewhere, why not here, solution? Um, what you're gonna see it address is begin to address the number of years of a teacher's experience. It's going to begin also addressing the additional content area of degrees and or credit hours. It's going to help reduce the gap between the school corporation's minimum teacher salary and the average of the school corporation's minimum and maximum teacher salaries. It's going to begin to address, um, which is our ultimate uh, guiding light, the academic needs of our students. It's going to begin to address the importance of retaining a given teacher at the school corporation. And it's going to also um, look at, again, not one-time stipends, but including this in the base salary. So it can be, this is a permanent beginning fix to move forward with.
So while you're switching, just to kinda, um, so what I'm hearing, I'm, I'm loving everything I'm hearing, by the way. Just this, this seems like it, it's possibly a wonderful solution. Um, in essence, we would be getting that salary scheduled in.
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
And if for some reason there's an outlier to this schedule, um, what I'm saying is, obviously, we do not want anybody to go backwards. If, if somebody's not impacted by this, we have another thought for that also at the end. But um, it's saying we're gonna certainly grandfather you. Um, and it, you will see through this matrix or schedule, if you will, where they will then catch up to that and they will start to increase as well throughout this. Um, so that was also considered, um, its main focus is that zero to fifteen, but also providing a schedule where people can know where they're at and where they're going. Um, so even if it's not this year one, it's maybe year two or potentially, hey, if I say another three years, there's four thousand. Yeah.
No, I mean, I, I still hear, I mean, we haven't had a salary schedule for a long time.
Correct.
Very long time, and I still hear, I miss the salary schedule. I mean, I know when I first started teaching, I had a salary schedule, it was wonderful. I knew exactly how much I was gonna be making the next year and the next year. And if I got my masters, I would do this, and yeah, so it, it's exactly that. You know where you are, you know where you're going and provides stability, so. I love that.
What I need to do is reduce, okay, here we go. All right. So here is, um. Again, this here, once I started grouping and you saw the summation, if you will, on one of the slideshows, but this really is what started speaking to me. The zero, and you can see the uh, Y O S, years of service, years of experience. Um, on the far left column, look at year four. We have ten educators that are year four making forty-three thousand two fifty. So under the old premise of, well, let's just add a thousand or two thousand or seven fifty to each spot. All that's doing is expanding um, the, the quote-unquote problem area, right? So look down here. This is very catchy and my, this is not the sleepest to wear for, okay. Look at year seven. We have one educator at year seven that's making forty-three thousand seven fifty. That's a problem. Um, this is going to address that, okay? And so it was really me taking a look at the data like this where, where I was looking going, oh my word. Um, this is, you know, there's the masters and then as you go over, um, you have anyone with an EDS, doctorate. There's the subtitles, um, there's your adjunct miscellaneous and adding them back in. So, taking a look at this, obviously, we wanted to make sure that we could be competitive as the most that we could be. Um, we wanted to make sure this started to make sense. We didn't want a seven-year educator making the same exact amount that somebody coming in would make. We didn't feel like that made sense. So, taking a look, this is um, a recommendation, again, as a beginning, uh, beginning point to start to address um, as a solution. So for twenty-three, twenty-four, what we're saying is, zero years of experience, let's start it at forty-six thousand five hundred. Let's be competitive um, to the surrounding area. Let's say this will put us today at the highest in the area beginning teacher. Now, what you'll see over here, I have it highlighted in yellow, I don't know if that's showing up on the screen too well. But what you can see is this is our current quote-unquote matrix. It takes you thirteen years under our current matrix to get to where we're saying at the beginning amount would be. Takes you thirteen years, and here we go again with this. So at thirteen years, we have um, three teachers that are making between the range of forty-six thousand six sixty and forty-seven thousand five twelve. So. So what you're seeing there is a beginning salary of forty-six thousand uh, five hundred. Technically, what you would also see is an increment of our current staff. So we have thirty-eight current staff members um, that are at that zero years of experience. They would all increment, right? So we would have hopefully zero that we're hiring in, uh, with zero years of experience because we're gonna retain all of our staff. Um, so, but those thirty-eight that are zero this year would go to the line one. So they would go from forty-three thousand two fifty. There we go again. To uh, forty-six thousand seven fifty. So that's where you see the thirty-eight would move to forty-six thousand seven fifty. There's a two-hundred-and-fifty dollar increment um, between each step, if you will. And I'm really excited to um, continue the work moving forward to make this even better together, you know? This is something I've said, it's a starting point. I would love to be able to minimize the number of steps, consolidate them. So a beginning teacher can um, get through that schedule, if you will, a lot quicker. I would like to increase the amounts between the steps. But I also have to be realistic to, um, so I wanna also have to look at you guys and say, how are we going to fund this, right? So taking into consideration the funds that we have, this is what I'm able to um, put together as a proposal, as a recommendation. Here we go again with this. Um, and you can just see as it stepped through, like I said, it's um, about two-hundred-and-fifty between every step. You can also see on the right, the, the difference there is uh, the left-hand column is those with the bachelor. The right-hand column is those with a master. The one, the, I saw an outlier in some of this and I, um, we have a couple doctorates. We have one that is um, within that zero to fifteen. You talk about a scab, you know, the scattergrams that you, that you look at to see if you have any outliers. Um, there was one, so I think the best way to address that is to apply a um, flat amount, if you will, that gets added that for that additional uh, degree as a doctorate. So I think that that's a way to um, to make that work as well. So just stepping you through here, I'll, you know, I'll let you kind of take a look at what this means. Down here at about sixteen years of service, and you can't really see it, but on mine, it's a really lovely shade of blue. Um, for the left-hand column for the bachelor and on the right, this right here where you see I just put the, the cursor is in green. I don't know if you can really see the color variation on that screen. But when it's highlighted, that means it actually started making sense in the incremental steps, if you will, through the sca- schedule with our current um, salary to mouse. And that again told me again, that was a further uh, reason that that zero to fifteen definition of that middle tier is what made sense. Uh, because just through this natural progression, it was year sixteen when really our salaries started making sense again. Um, but what you will see though is, like right here, if I'm in year um, sixteen and then I go to year seventeen, the following year, they're going to see an increment if they're at fifty thousand seven forty-eight. They could still experience that increment to fifty-two thousand one sixteen, that following year. So this again gives them something to look forward to as they go through this. Now, are there some that say um, rates? Are there some through this that right now they make more than where this may necessarily show them? Yes, will it catch up with them as they increment? Yes, but if they make more, we grandfather them in, we're not reducing them, that would be silly. Um, here on lane, on lane nineteen, I did add a two-hundred-and-fifty differential there. We didn't have any rate thi- this year in nineteen. We didn't have any rate th- this year in nineteen. Uh cause you can see here in twenty, there's zero, which that means this year, line nineteen is zero. But I did feel like for it to make even further sense, go ahead and bump that to fifty, just so there's that increment in between those lanes, if you will. I did the same on the uh masters down here at year thirty-two. Um I I provided a differential to where that currently is, where somebody that happens to be in that is going to um is going to benefit from that incremental um deviation, if you will, between those steps of years of experience. So that in a nutshell is the proposal that I'm looking at. Um again, it's a starting point that we can begin to build off of. So if I look at what does this mean as far as well, how are we going to pay for it, one, and I will show you that. But two, what does that mean as far as where it takes us from our average salary to where this would take us? So first, let me show you how I I plan on funding it. What you see in the upper-left hand here is basically that financial fiscal run that the Legislative Service Agency provides us. One of the things, and I I saw it in Karen's presentation, the average uh A D M has been on a decrease. This does take that trend analysis in to uh it takes it into consideration. You can see right here, um it's going actually right here because of the non-virtual. Uh we are projected by the Legislative Service Agency to reduce ninety-nine students from this current school year to next school year. Um we are doing everything we can to try to to ensure that doesn't happen because if that doesn't happen, we'll have even additional resources. However, just the same, if we lose more than the trend, um then that would put us in a different situation that we would also have to tighten our belt on in different areas. But I did also try to take those things into consideration when saying, what's the range that I should try to stay within? Um so this this or this financial um projection does include that trend line of recognizing a negative ninety-nine A D M from last school year to the uh upcoming school year. And then again, it does the same thing for the following year. It's so it's considering an overall decrease for two years, um a hundred and ninety-seven students. So because they went back to the drawing board, Richmond overall, including the Foundation of Complexity Grants and um the other specialized grants that go that make up the um the total tuition amount that's received for the Education Fund. Richmond will see an increase of one-point-five million from last school year to the coming school year. And then again, because of additional A D M loss, we're going to actually see a decrease a little bit for fiscal year twenty-five. Um about thirty thousand decrease because they're projecting additional students. So again, in order to try to make sure that we can afford, because I definitely want to help write checks, settle cash. Um if I take a look at that one-point-five million for the difference between fiscal year twenty-four from fiscal year twenty-three, that's that one-million-five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-two-fifty-eight. If I look at a range of sixty to sixty-five percent of that money, that takes me between nine-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand to one million. Because of those decreases in A D M, we also have, and and I know we've talked about this, um it is, we don't want to riff, you know, we're working hard to retain all of our teachers. So it's better to work through attrition. And we're we're putting those plans into place to be able to experience that. We're also considering the quote-unquote uh cl- uh Esser Cliff to be able to pull um a plan for for those that are funded with an Esser. We wanna work to move those over to the Education Fund and I'll let Karen talk a little bit more about that here shortly. Um this thing is touchy. So if I just look at the attrition costs, but also I will say it's a con- um concentrated effort to also look at as we have turnover, what does that look like? Whether it's by a department, by an individual, um what that looks like and how can we um become creative and still trying to provide those needed uh services, but reutilize those resources to be able to put um to retaining our teachers? So total, I felt like to be comfortable, we have a range of just shy of one-point-three million to one-point-three-seven-five total. This is Education Fund, okay? So if you take a look at the proposal that I have, and I and I will also just tell you, here is all of the work that you can see here. That's the twenty-three, twenty-four, taking every single um data point and making it real. That's what that looks like. For twenty-four, twenty-five, this is what it looks like, every single line, every single current employee. This is summarizing then all of that data. With that schedule that you see, the difference between twenty-four from twenty-three is one-point-three-five-three, which is in that range that I provided you, that comfort- comfortable range. Um and that's for the first year. That second year within the Education Fund, it goes to about a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand with allowing all of those steps to occur as well. Um and then you can see the breakdown here of the special funding, whether it's the Special Education Grant, um Title One, Title Two, uh Esser for the few that we have an Esser, and any miscellaneous grant. So the total cost is one-point-four. I did, as you can see here, uh considered uh T R F. I also consider uh considered F I C A, so those values are with T R F and F I C A. We do assume that um for the most part, people who took insurance this year would take insurance next year. So we stabilize those costs as well as when um looking at this. So that's how it will be funded. Now, just as to summarize, if you will, to kind of circle this back around. Here's all the individualized amounts. This first column is that base amount for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um what the base amount would go to for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um that difference, the average difference or the average percent change. That next column, which is purple on my screen, I'm not sure what it is up there, um which starts here, is um what it would look like to step again, going back to that stepped increment um for years of experience. So that's allowing that increment to occur again, what that difference is and what that percent is. So the summarized data on this, you can see some are changing ten percent, eight percent. It's just that it's varied increments based off of what that's um what, how far out of WAC, if you will, for the lack of a better term. So as I go down. Me and this touch screen.
Maybe adjunct teachers still stay as that, because I just saw one go from thirty-six to forty-six.
That's a great question. So what I wanted to do was not only look at estimated costs based off of what was last year budgeted, but also look at actual amounts. So right now, we have that actual thirty-six thousand adjunct. What we're going to assume is we're going to repost that position, right, to try to get a certified teacher. So what I'm doing is assuming it'll come in
As a teacher.
As a te- as a certified teacher.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yes.
I just saw that one flip by.
That's a great question. Thank you. I'm. Okay.
There we go.
Okay. So right now for twenty-two, twenty-three, our average teacher salary is fifty-two thousand six twenty-two point eight-nine. That's our average. With this proposal, one of the things I really wanted to do beyond just being able to do the schedule and to provide additional um compensation for a masters or additional degree um and to fix this um zero-to-fifteen-year tier. I also really wanted to be able to try to get our average salary up above that fifty-five thousand threshold. Um so that we can bridge that gap and market that because that is a great marketing for the attraction of staff. Um but also then obviously that's rewarding all of our current staff in an effort to do that. So this plan would take us to an average of fifty-five thousand fifty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. This is all relative to our current staff that we have, okay? Um you can see what that difference in the average would be. But then for twenty-five, the twenty-four, twenty-five, um base amount, it would take that average closer to fifty-six uh mid fifty-five thousand six hundred almost, just shy. What you're seeing here is what I did was just say, okay, I'm going to do a count-if formula that if if anybody received any increment, which is even just a penny, wh- how many employees are impacted by this? Two-hundred-and-seventy-one for next school year. That is eighty, almost eighty-four percent of our staff is impacted in some way by this matrix. How many are re- would receive over five hundred dollars? That would be two-hundred-and-fifty, or about seventy-seven percent. How many would get over a thousand? Two-hundred-and-thirty-six, which is about seventy-three percent of our staff. Um and what's the average increase for those that are over a thousand is thirty-two hundred dollars. So and you can see the average of all that are included, even if some had to even increment. I think there was one that incremented like eighty-two dollars. So if I include all of them, the average is two-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. Which I think it's important to know, I think uh two years ago, everybody got a two-thousand-dollar increase. This last year was seven-hundred-and-fifty. This is coming out of the gate saying um if it's if there's an increase warranted because of the correction that's needed, it would be two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-three dollars. For next school year or the following twenty-four, twenty-five, there was two-hundred-and-seventy-six employees that would receive an increment that following year, which is eighty-five percent of our staff. Um now, that increment is smaller because it's already establishing that matrix, if you will. Um and that's what we can begin to to work on even more so together. How many would get over five hundred? That's eighty-six, or twenty-six percent of our staff. And over a thousand is sixty-seven, or twenty, almost twenty-one percent of our staff. Um and then this is the difference over here is the difference betw- uh com- doing a comparison between the fiscal year twenty-five to the current fiscal year of twenty-three. On average, you're seeing um two-hundred-and-eighty-five overall impacted in one way or another. Um and then the average increase, which obviously correlates to that average base amount being um uh get- getting higher. Um I'm trying to look to see. So two more things and then I'll be done. Um one, you know, after looking at this, and and I have received an incredible amount of wonderful input and I hope that this is reflected in that. Um before, you know, the the final recommendation, I obviously wanted to provide um you with the opportunity to provide me input. Um I am going to share, um I I actually detailed this with um Mrs. McDermott. And but to be fair to her and her team, I'm going to just provide the data as well if there's additional input. Um but I will tell you, time is, time is of the essence with this as well. The other piece before I throw it back over to Karen is one of the things that we really need to also consider is this doesn't touch a hundred percent of the people. And a hundred percent of our people matter to R C S. And I want to retain a hundred percent of our staff. So that's where we were saying, okay, what other options can we have that maybe are in addition to this? That we can say, hey, even if you were impacted, which on one frame of mind of thinking about that, that is somewhat good if you if you wanna consider it that way because that means in in comparative um analysis way, you are already making um a comparable amount to the actual co- current compensation model, or um another way of thinking about it, you couldn't leave and come back and make more, um which is good. Um but also, we do recognize that um we want to retain everybody. So with that, I'm going to throw it back over to Karen if she's still there.
She is and and I've uh I've been keeping up with her uh via text. I mean unmute so we can hear her. And we were trying to prevent this this recall, let's see. Mrs. Scalf, are you there, ma'am?
I am here.
Okay, sounds uh crystal clear. It's on you, ma'am.
Okay, so um Jamie has provided a proposal that um that we have been talking about for quite a while. I just wanna just um kind of say, why now will this work? And um part of it is that there are tools uh like Jamie referenced that we haven't had before. And so it's something that as we've looked, um it's just not been as um available to make happen um in this fashion. There's been changes to legislation, there's been changes to the the ability to do some things. And so um that's kind of why now is a time in which it can be looked at um and solved in a uh realistic way. Um the changes to the budget um are favorable to schools. And we are very aware, um the estimates on A D M are real. Um I did provide those to them, so they have followed our trend as we saw earlier tonight. And then we also know that the second year, we personally at R C S are not going to see some of those um changes in a more positive way that some other schools will see because just that differentiated funding. So with that first year being what it is, it does provide a little bit of an opportunity to do that now. So with that, um and with knowing that this doesn't touch a hundred percent of our teachers, we wanted to make sure that we could um do something that says we really want you to be here next year. Um as Jamie said, it's really hard when we have a lot of turnover. Our kids need our teachers, they need familiar faces. They need people they can trust and depend on because they know them. And so um what I'm going to um loft as a part of this proposal is what we are calling a retention stipend. And with that, um the proposed stipend would be to all current R C S teachers who finish this school year and return for twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh the proposal is five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per teacher to be split into installments, one per semester. Um and then the first semester being paid um before November fifteenth so that uh everyone has that around or before Thanksgiving. And then the second installment would be um prior to April fifteenth. The goal would be that we can issue that before spring break, but depending on the calendar. Um it's something that we'll just have to uh see if we can process fast enough. Um it shouldn't be a problem, but April fifteenth gives us the time um to reconcile all of that. So uh that is the other piece to this, that as we look at resetting or re-um establishing more of a schedule and more of a um a a correction per se um to what we're finding in the gaps that currently exist. Um this would also provide the staff with the um just knowing that we want them here and we want them back. And so um that really is the the gist of everything that we're proposing tonight. Um we would love to open the floor for questions, comments, um things that you'd like to talk about. And we'll just do that now. So thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it. And we appreciate all the work that you're doing on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Scalf. Thank you, Mrs. Bowser. Now, Mrs. Scalf, uh you're uh you're still uh hot and uh mic'd, if you will. I'll I'll leave you uh so that you can interject and chime in for
Okay.
These uh responses, questions, thoughts.
So is that right answer? Eighty-five percent of all of our teaching staff is getting uh of more money on the schedule, but a hundred percent are receiving the stipend. Correct?
So therefore, as what was referenced, uh you know, we've heard where the So therefore, as what was referenced, uh, yeah, we've heard where the interest lies. We've heard from our teachers, we've heard, uh, in years of conversation that this military, uh, is subject to, uh, a, a focus and interest. And so, that's where the majority of this, this will lie. But it also, as, uh, was presented, provides, uh, something for, for everybody.
So would the ones, uh, okay, so eighty-five percent receiving a salary increase, and then, uh, a hundred percent, like, so they would be receiving a salary increase and a retention?
That's, that's what we're recommending.
Okay.
How does this affect, uh, collective bargaining?
Um, I think obvious, you know, obviously, this is, this is taking a, a chunk of money, but we are still excited to, to bargain and to get with, with, um, the, the association's team. Um, we're just concerned of the timing and how time is of the essence, but we, you know, are certainly still excited to collaborate on how to even expand on this. Um, also, you know, they, like I said, I, we've mentioned, we had, uh, as detailed with this, um, with Mrs. McDermott, but I will justify, I will say, you know, that's a lot of information to receive all at once. So, um, I'm gonna just provide the, the data, um, so that it can be looked at, um, and to, to receive any additional input that, that could be considered as well. Um, but also trying to balance that, it is such a timely, um, need. But we, we are certainly still looking forward to, to getting around the collective bargaining table. Then I think we have, um, an upcoming meeting, um, uh, June, twelve?
Oh, the,
In mid-June. Uh, and then June, our, our schedules were, were able to align, which is difficult with, um, some, you know, that many people, as I know, you know. Um, but we're looking forward to, to hopefully using this as kind of a kickoff and say, what else can we do?
Again, this is just a first step, as was mentioned. Uh, and has, has been mentioned in the past, it's a first step. It's not gonna be sold overnight, but with a sense of urgency. Uh, if waiting, uh, as Mr. Mopps referenced, if waiting until this fall, we know what that could potentially look like based on the reservations, as well as the conversations we've had with educators who have, honestly, are, in confidence shared with us that they are receiving offers from elsewhere.
So you prefaced your, uh, anyway, uh, she prefaced her presentation with, uh, with stating that she'd already received those as a resignation from, how many?
Uh, we're about, we're about a half a dozen.
Okay, so if we can do this, and I know the timing is crucial for a number of reasons, because this is, as you and Mr. Mopps can attest to, this is a crucial time of the year for retention and going out and getting people to fill seats for the next four months, you know, prior to beginning of next school year. If we're able to get this done, and it's gotta be in this timely manner right now, uh, what are the possibility of, of some of those who have, uh, informed you of their intent to resign, that of them changing, changing their mind to, maybe ease your burden?
Well, I plan, my, my hope is if, if we can move on this to share the information, you know, and next week, if it's possible, or, you know, week after, as soon as possible. Before, you know, and if it can be before the next board meeting, which is on the twenty, twenty-fourth, is our next board meeting. Um, I'm hoping to be able to call every single one I've received, because it's kind of in a holding pattern right now, because we haven't officially, um, accepted those, and say, you wanna, will you reconsider?
It's until they get boarded, correct?
Correct, correct.
And, um, yeah, that, that is, uh, indeed the goal.
Well, my concern is because you look, if you've got that many, you, you know, whether they be the zero to five, or, you know, eleven to sixteen, or whatever.
Uniquely enough, they were all, um, within concentration of the,
Okay, so that middle, okay. So we're looking at a ton of years of teaching classroom experience, connections with students and families and everything else. And I think that's a key component of the necessity to get this done, so we can retain experience, quality experience, instead of having to basically create a void and then having to go out and start all over again.
And to that point, for those that have submitted, uh, resignations and/or are conversing with their building level leaders, uh, as well as even us, as, as they even trusted us with such information. Uh, metaphorically speaking, as we know, the grass is always, uh, well, a lot of folks assume the grass is always green, it's on the other side. Uh, but as we know, the grass is green as we water it the most. What we wanna do is share with this proposal to our faculty and staff that we are committed, uh, to, um, exercising the utmost of appreciation and value and through retention and recruitment, bringing the very best for our faculty and staff, or for our, our students that we serve, as well as, uh, fellow, fellow colleagues and faculty and staff. So, that is, that is, um,
There's been a concentrated effort, I would say, on that also. And looking at trying to, as, as you guys said at your last meeting, to try to stabilize the administrative team, um, with multi-year contracts, you know, those relationships at the building level are certainly important as they are not only, uh, providing relationships through that stability with the staff, but also the students and the family and other stakeholders. This is also saying it's important to stabilize that teaching base for those exact same reasons, for hopefully stabilization of our students and to provide them with more stability in the classroom too.
And that's cool, uh, that correlates with what we've heard, uh, from our faculty and staff. A request for sustainability, whether it be administration, whether it be fellow colleagues within the classroom of the turnover that our corporation has, has experienced for years. Everyone is, is ready for it to, to cease and end. And then this is a great first step in doing so.
I would think, uh, putting a salary schedule out there where teachers would understand the stability of the profession, that would increase the interest of the teachers that commute daily to, uh, intention to move to the area. Really be most of the working really.
And I'll tell you, to that end, to have those salary lanes, to know those, as somebody that's not in the school district that is thinking about moving, for whatever reason, that's the first thing you do when you're looking at, looking for jobs, is you find out, you know, what will I make? And, uh, and having that available for somebody to see and see how competitive it is, I think would be a huge benefit for recruitment. And you mentioned, you alluded to that, so that's, I think that's important to,
So you referenced, um, talking to Mrs. McDermott, um, which obviously, um, we want to know what the teachers feel about this. Um, we obviously are seeking to collaborate, you know. Um, I would think that they would be on board, I don't know, you know, but what, yeah, so it was,
Well, this certainly was, this certainly was designed with that, all the input that I've received, um, since, since arriving, um, in July. Um, but also, you know, and, and, and providing the information, just saying, you know, what inputs, you know, could you have? But also in trying to balance that with the, um, timeliness that this, that this does need to, to be moved upon. And just knowing too, it's a starting point. It can certainly be modified as we go, it can be added to, it can be condensed, it can, it, we have to, to start seeking the solutions, we have to start putting into motion, um, those solutions. So, um, you know, I, I, I certainly welcome the input and, um, I have, have modeled this around a vast, uh, amount of input so far even.
I think I really appreciate you and Karen, like, thinking creatively and really looking at the data and looking at the discrepancies. I think as a zero to sixteen-year teacher, I'd be like, yes! And maybe if I was an eighteen-year teacher, I'd wanna make sure that that's shared. You know, I know that you've looked at salaries and you've analyzed it and that maybe somehow we can share that understanding that it's kind of our schedule has been off, kind of weighted heavily in one area, and we're trying to, you know, set it back, I guess.
And I think too, with this design, you know, just looking in that eighteen, nineteen-year, you know, if I'm a, if I'm a nineteen-year teacher and right now I make fifty-three thousand, seven thirty-three, even with this, and even though they're outside that outline because of the importance of some sort of model or schedule that can help, uh, base, increment based off of years of experience, that following year, they would go to fifty-five thousand, eight fifty-three. So there's even something embedded to show future growth and, and we can continue to expand on this as we go.
I think if you're an eighteen-year teacher, you understand that not having a new person next to you every single year is gonna benefit you.
Yes.
Because you're a mentor, and you really wanna mentor one time, and then grow that person and, and build that relationship with your peers. And I think this is another step to be able to do that. Um, and, and Jay can tell you, you know, when you, when you have kids coming into your class and they come from a, a room that might not, that might struggle a little bit, it, it makes your, uh, classroom a little bit more struggle. So if you get that experience, you get those kids who come from experienced teachers, that's fair.
We, we, I, I will echo that, we heard that yesterday. Um, and, um, and from our administrative team as well. Um, but that's been, that's certainly a highlighted point.
And I wasn't there yesterday.
I know you weren't.
And nobody told me.
So, I'm really glad he actually mentioned that, because there is some, there's a lot of validity in that. So I'm, thank you for making that point.
You know, one of the things where, what models the collaboration, and when you're, know who you're gonna be working with, that's a big deal too, where you have to, where you learn how to work with somebody differently.
Right.
Well, and Brad, um, you, you also have the other thing that, you know, if we're getting, how many new teachers did we hire last year?
Um, twenty-five percent of our staff.
So twenty-five percent of our staff was new last year, so we had to train twenty-five percent of our staff. And training doesn't come for free. So that costs us too. So that, hopefully if we cut that in half, we'll cut the, the cost of training new teachers in half as well. So I think there's another benefit there too.
And I, and I, I, because, and that is, I know,
It's true tonight, that you agree with.
We can't like, write that down.
Which again, is a more of a major benefit to,
It is, and it also though, it, it speaks to why this is of the essence too. Because you know, as you look to professionally develop and can, and expand on that growth, because we're all, we all should be continual learners in some capacity. But there is an expense to that, there's an expense to the turnover too. And, and I said, you know, I, I, I want to make sure that we're professionally developing our staff for our students, not for the students of a surrounding community school. You know, I wanna make sure that we're getting that return on investment, and more importantly, that our students are.
So with that notation, uh, in reference to staff, if you all own mine, just to be respectful where everyone's tied, uh, I know we always open up these work sessions, which is the intention of this forum, uh, to our, uh, audience and, uh, for public commentary. And so, if anyone in our audience would like to join the conversation, you're more than welcome to come in and have a seat at the, uh, the horseshoe here with us, uh, and, uh, provide response and, or commentary, or you'll stand, or you'll stand in the podium, that's fine. And then once, once they have had opportunity to speak, then, uh, we'll continue in dialogue as we,
Melissa, you're welcome to come up too.
Yes, you are.
And stake in this, so.
Geez, James Mike, those chairs are better.
Mrs. Scalph, can you still hear us, ma'am?
All right, join in.
Thank you.
What are your thoughts?
There's a lot of information to,
Process.
To process right now and so forth, so I think it's a, a nice starting point. I, I have some of the questions, like Mr. Mop, what's it gonna do to collective bargaining? Where's this money gonna come from? What's the backend? What's gonna happen? So forth. I don't know, I, I, and that's just stuff that we had to, had to go through and, and come back in and talk. Uh, you said you did share this with Kelly, so, um, after tonight, I can go have a conversation with her and, and see about it. It's interesting. It's something that's definitely been needed for a very long time. Um, you know, when, when I, um, when I look at the middle, I always go back to two thousand and eleven, because that's when the shenanigans all started. And the people from then are the ones who have suffered. I got lucky, I was maxed out by then. So it never did really touch me, touch my wife, but didn't touch me. Um, so, I mean, those are the people, I, I keep thinking about Mark Price, who makes twenty-three-hundred dollars more than, than a first-year teacher. He's an eleven-year teacher with teaching our AP, AP Gov, AP Euro, and all these extra classes. And luckily, you know, we've kinda gave him some supplements, uh, last year, or two years ago. Gave him some supplements to help offset those classes, but still, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah, I'm sitting here living with you, man. I, two thousand and eleven happened, I left in two thousand and fourteen, because I was, three years later, I was still having the same thing. Same thing happened to Keith.
Yep.
That's the reason we left and went other places, was to be in the plugging play and someone else's salary scales that we're, we can get rid.
So I, it's very interesting, I'd like to just get this, all the information, actually sit down and look at it. And, uh, I'm like, uh, most people, I need to, I'm visual, so I'll go back there, type, look, and so forth. I need to see and then compare.
And I'm happy to sit down with, with anyone.
And, and Mr.,
Before work, after work, on the weekends.
No, no doubt, I'm curious as, uh, if you don't mind me sharing, uh, your status there at RHS as building rep. Have you heard from your, from your membership, have you heard from non-members? Have you heard from your colleagues as to their intentions of potentially moving on?
Absolutely.
As a result of,
Had a conversation with, uh, a twelfth-year teacher over there that, that is at a job interview, or she's at, she was at a job interview.
Well, let's call him.
Just to see, yeah.
Well, I talked to her and said, uh, that, uh, hopefully we find something out, what's going on, and said, don't commit yet, make sure you sit there. So I, we're, we're, the teachers, uh, and I'm not talking for the union here, but the teachers wanna see RHS, our, I'm gonna say RHS, 'cause that's my home. RCS to be successful. That's why we've spent so many years here, and we're in it with you, we just need to figure out how to get it done. I mean, actions always speak, speak louder than words. And, uh, you know, words are words, and that's gonna be my topic here in a minute. But the, um, the actions, how are we gonna put it down and make it, make it happen?
And I hope you can see that through this beginning stage, that, um, what we've heard is reflected in that. Um, because of the advocacy, um, and because of those, um, conversations that we've been able to have, that it is reflected in this. And, um, like I said from the beginning, it's a perfectly imperfect way, but it does need to be addressed. And, um, we have to be willing to step, uh, step to that line and be able to say, let's fix it. So this is hopefully a beginning part to fix it even further.
This is the beginning of the collaboration.
Yeah.
And that's what needs to be to get fixed.
So, Dr. Wright?
Yes, we can hear you, Mrs. Scalph, go ahead.
Okay, I just, I know that, um, Mr. Lee had asked a question on where it's to be funded. And I just wanted to make sure that we reiterated that the plan for this, um, is intended, um, to utilize the new budget, uh, that the state passed just this spring. So, that, um, that was the intention, was that we would be able to make this work with that. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate that, because Bowser shared that earlier, but it is, um, it was a little, probably, um, with all the other data points, it might have been a little bit harder to, to hear. But, um, that was the plan for making sure that we could fund this.
Yeah, and that's where we'd have to come back and see all the numbers. June twelfth, when we get finally, everybody gets together and we, we see all the numbers.
And that is certainly, um, looking at, you know, as, as Mr. Mopps referenced, you know, when, once we, you know, we sit down through that formalized process, even obviously we have by then more of the concrete, um, formalized numbers too, at that point. You know, you, you're not using projections, you're do, using actualities a little bit more too. Um, but with the supplemental payment, um, and utilizing this new tool, um, in that proverbial tool chest, um, it's trying to also say, let's try to address this before, because I did, that person that went to interview tonight, I want them to know that what they're coming back to and what they can, um, start the school year at, and that. We're also, uh, earmarking, bookmarking, however you wanna mark it, um, a substantial part of the budget out of the gate to say, let's put it, let's put this to where we've heard the commonalities and the common themes of where it needs to be. But then also understanding with, like, that retention stipend that's still up on the, on the board, saying, how else can we address everybody?
Again, it's, it's, it's that current employee.
That's going to get interviewed.
That,
That, that gives, like, you could see on my watch, that probably gave me heart palpitations.
It's, 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 it's to that, uh, reasoning for that, that we wanted to share with you all as trustees, as well as our, 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 our public at large, what, um, options we potentially could explore. Understanding and knowing that this is not in power, but, uh, to help everyone, Understanding and knowing that this is not in power creep, uh, but, uh, to help everyone understand that, to Mr. Lee's point, we are walking the talk and through action-based leadership, uh, trying to resolve an issue has been of challenge for some time. Uh, in no way, uh, were we trying to do anything other than that with this, uh, information, uh, informational setting. Point being, if we had, had an opportunity to present this budgetary workshop last month, this would not even been a topical conversation.
So going, going back to what Karen talked about, that, you know, we're, it's really a time, time sensitive. So, so what's, what's our timeline? What, what are, what are next steps? What do we need to do?
In a perfect world, uh, we would be able to move on this, uh, uh, as soon as possible. But to Mrs. Bowser's point, to what we have always vowed, uh, and said since, uh, since, uh, coming home, we want to respect processes and respect, um, dialogue, conversation and collaboration. But at the same time, we know that, uh, we're up against, uh, vultures throughout, uh, our county, throughout our region and throughout our state, uh, that have in their toolbox, options and tools they can go to right now. And so to your, to your question, Mr. Mops, again, uh, I believe that it will be the sooner the better. I think that that sentiment is shared, uh, of the conversations that we've, uh, we've engaged in. I think that sentiment is shared. It's just getting there. And so, um, what I'd like to be able to say to all of our teachers, just as we shared with you all that our trustees are committed, we're committed, uh, colleagues are committed. Here it is. Uh, let's, let's, let's go forward.
I'm kind of hopeful before the next board meeting, if you want my honest opinion, Mr. Mop.
That's, that's all I believe.
Because, okay, the reason, um, and I don't mean to interject where I'm not needed, so please, um, but the reason is because I'm hoping not to bring to you the resignations that I've received and tried to, you know, stop any more from coming. So I, I mean, I guess I, in the perfect world, I would prefer for the next board meeting.
We're seeing a lot of nodding over here. What's, you have gotten the chance to speak.
I'll, I'll turn around my home for a little bit. As the leader of a building who had over sixty percent new people in my teaching staff this year and lost three others in the middle of the year because of money. Not because of the kids, not because of anything like that, straight up money. Um, this is huge and so vitally important for the stability of our kiddos. Um, when we came back from spring break, I honestly had three kids that were shocked that our special ed teacher was the same special ed teacher. They thought she was going to leave because they're so used to, they go to a break, they come back and there's a different person. And honestly, this is a huge credit to JV and Karen. And I have two special ed teachers now because JV worked so ridiculously hard to overcome that salary gap so that they would come. Because I have an amazing special ed team that could easily be making money somewhere else. And it was hard to convince them to come. And I also have two that I know currently right now are looking elsewhere and have interviews. But I know of one that if we get this through, she's going to stay.
I gotta say.
It sounds like you're definitely seeing the urgency as well.
That's, that's the why.
I don't want to hire more people. I'm done hiring.
So yes, to this one point prior to the next board meeting for sure.
Well, a personal note on this, um, I know the past four and a half, five years, this has been a really big topic for the previous board makeup, we've been up with four previous or current educators. We're now with four current or previous educators again. This is probably the sympathetic, sympathetic board you're ever going to have around the area to influence calls. And those that haven't had education are still geared to it to where they see the importance of this. We're really putting effort on this past, um, we, I mean, the last two cycles of bargaining, we've talked about it. It's a really push toward this and to, to get you and Karen to really make, make these numbers happen as well. I mean, we've been through so much the past, I mean, we make excuses to them, but we know that they, I mean, the past three years have been chaotic for education. And now that we're kind of starting to go back in on a normal track where we'll get this done, um, this is huge. Uh, just the stability of people in the buildings, hopefully, and the whole morale of the buildings, the, the school spirit. These people are there. Hopefully there's more buy-in for the community, for the staffs.
And it goes so far to reestablish the trust that we have to have going forward to make this work.
And we heard that today in our leadership meeting too, talking about the culture and the morale is, and, you know, our leaders are saying, we are seeing that change and we want to retain those people as we're seeing that change.
For the sake of what Mrs. Jordan mentioned, for the sake of our students, all right, we need to create something that allows our students to trust that their teachers are going to be back in those same roles.
So I'll postulate for a moment because I'm one, you know, your wife is an educator. I'm probably the only person in here who does not have a director or has not had a direct, uh, I think, except, uh, uh, member Weber, who has had, hi John, who has not necessarily had a, a relationship connection to classroom education.
His dad, his dad was an educator also.
Yes, I'm, I'm, so I'm, I'm the left.
It's just you.
I have relatives who have served in, in education capacity in this corporation. But in my time on the board, one thing that I have also understood, the close relationship between my chosen profession as a police officer and that of, of the educator, uh, the two most necessary, yet underpaid and underappreciated positions in our nation right now, which is primarily, you know, and, and nurses. But right in this venue.
You mean if we're gonna.
Yeah, it's this venue. And it's very interesting because everything that we have discussed right now, uh, the necessity of getting this across is basically the same type of presentation I received from administrators from my own department last night. The attrition rate because of salaries and other benefits. You know, seven years ago, we were, we did a complete flip on our department of going from high, high end in, in seniority to very low end with the department that very quickly became, uh, over fifty percent less than six or seven years on. And now we're losing again because of competitiveness of benefits, a shortage in the profession around the country. People, the vultures, as you referred to, from everywhere coming in and plucking, plucking, plucking. And we have become a picking spot. You know, RCS like, uh, RPT has become that picking spot. Let's train them and then let's pluck them someplace else because they've got the experience. It's going to be less cost effective for me to take you because that's fewer training. This is the exact presentation that I heard last night. So again, uh, the exploration of benefits and opportunities to attract, retain and recruit. And so from that perspective, outside of education and linking it in with discussion, I, I think the urgency is here right now. You know, uh, Jay, I appreciate you very well as the building rep and also your role with REA. But I go back to Ms. Uh, Jordan and her role as, you know, a building principal. And I could see it in her, in her eyes and hear it in her voice. This is probably the most paramount thing that, that lies before us right now. The sooner and the sooner we can get this done, the better in my opinion.
Jay, I want to give you the mic again because it sounded like you had.
I just got a couple of things. Number one, number one, I don't pay the bills in my own house. So anything financial, I'm going to defer to Treese. She tells me, no, you can't have that. And I say, you can. I understand. I've seen the boss's job. I don't want it. With the new monies that are coming in, is this all of the new money? Is it eighty percent? I don't know anything about, anything about that, but, but I know there's a chunk of money that's going to be coming. And that's normally when we bargain in September on that. So I don't know what that is. So if you, if you've talked to Kelly about that, then.
Sixty to sixty-five percent.
It's about sixty to, it's closer. It's about sixty-four percent, uh, of the new money, um, for the fiscal year twenty-four. But obviously we would still need to fund that, obviously that following year as well because it's a continued expense. So it, uh, it would elevate a little bit more to that second year because it's a continuation of that expense since it's added to the base amount.
I think, uh, Mrs. Scalp also wants to chime in. Mrs. Scalp, did you want to interject?
Yes, I, I just want to make sure that, um, everybody is, is aware that even though this is what we're expecting to be sixty percent of the money, we are all aware that it's dependent upon ADM.
Correct.
And so that's something that even though we are like projecting this, it is so important to us to get this done in order to know that we can keep the staff that we have or try to keep the staff that we have, that we are trying to do it now so that we could keep them. I mean, that's reality. We want to keep them. We want to make sure that we can kind of secure this for our kids because it, it is hard on kids to see new faces every single year. So that is something that even though Jay, I know you want us to pinpoint those dollars right now. We are very aware that count day is really when that's going to happen, which is why we are saying right now, that's what we expect it to be. But we're also putting ourselves out there to say it's that important to us that we'll have to make the adjustments if, if we do decrease by more than what's expected. So that's something that, um.
I just don't want to lose our rights as a collective bargaining.
The other thing that I just want, uh, people to know is count day changed for next year. So they have moved it to October. So that pushes the timeline back even more, which drives this to an even bigger and stronger point in that we really are trying to, to get our teachers where they need to be, um, now so that we can move forward next year. So that's something that, um, looking ahead to next year, you know, you never know. But we are, as, you know, everyone has challenged each other, um, in the corporation to get kids back that aren't with us now or to keep the kids that we have and grow them, um, to market ourselves in an even better and bigger fashion so that our public knows just what we do and how well we do it, um, and the opportunities you can have here at RCS. I think that it's just important that we all, um, recognize that that ADM is still a driver, but it's so important to us to get this done, that we're willing to, um, to talk about it now.
And, and to complement what Mrs. Weber's references, going back to, oh, remember Stevens, uh, had alluded to. In the grand scheme of things, uh, when we can create sustainability within the classroom, we know that instruction and rigor and the experience overall will improve. Uh, we know that, uh, again, we've heard, as we've shared, uh, in talking with teachers, where their interest lies, but there also is the component of student behavior and, and student attendance. We address those matters, improve upon our learning environments. It makes it so that Richmond Community Schools becomes that much more attractive. It makes it so that, uh, and we all know that we have, uh, those that are, those students who are laying their heads down in Richmond, getting up, going to schools within our county. They then start to come back, which increases, as Mrs. Scalp just mentioned, our ADM count, which then increases, um, conversations and monies down the road that could come back to help continue to address some of these, uh, some of these challenges that have been decades old. And so, uh, but to Mr. Lee's point that I want to make sure that, uh, uh, he was able to, to share that, uh, he, as he said, Mrs. Scalp, I'm not sure if you heard, he wants to make sure that, um, their rights, uh, with things like department are not stripped of them, uh, with this. And so, thank you, Mrs. Scalp.
I understand that, yeah. And thank you, thank you, Mr. Lee. I appreciate your comments and your questions. Um, I think it's been great.
Thank you. Um, last thing, then I'll, I'll stop talking. I like everybody else. I love Richmond. That's why I moved here. It's the only place I wanted to come to. That's why we stayed. All right, um, in my department, I got, got me and Matt, the old timers. And then we got fifteen, eleven, five, four, three, two. My, my, uh, one of my big goals for the last four or five years is growing those guys to be the next leader. So when I retire, that I feel secure saying here. And, and the money thing is a big time thing because we've lost a lot of teachers in that middle range in the last seven, eight years that are at different schools in the county and so forth. Uh, and, uh, so, but here recently, it's kind of stabilized with our young ones. They, they really like where we are, at least our department. They really like what, what they're doing and how they're doing. And so we're kind of stable right now. We just need to keep them.
And that was echoed across the corporation. I know, Mrs. Jordan could allude to it when I spoke with, we're giving more than ninety percent of our teachers throughout the corporation. The one thing they continue to reference is the appreciation for the camaraderie and the, uh, family orientation that they find on a daily basis in their, their schoolhouses. And so to be able to keep that in place is, is huge. We're roughly twenty minutes over time.
Yes, I think this is a leaping or a stepping stone to start. And I think, I don't think we're doing this trying to put a tourniquet on some of the bleeding we've had here and try to stabilize to their point of times of the essence. It would be my preference to move on this tonight. I don't know how others feel with moving to, uh, have, do you have another meeting set up?
And actually that's, that's the one thing that I, and I appreciate the, uh, the recognition of the sense of urgency. But I think that, uh, all the conversations that we have had and all the, the meetings that we've had just, uh, this week. I think that if we were able to reconvene, uh, those, those conversations that we have had in the next, uh, few days here, uh, with, with our, our association.
So you've met, okay, so you've met with REA and you're contin, you're thinking maybe meet with REA again then tomorrow, Friday?
Allow any additional input because understandably so, you know, like Jane.
It's a lot of information.
It's a, it's a lot of information. You know, when I'm in the middle of it, you know, it, it makes complete sense to me. Um, but understanding, um, it is a lot of information and I would, um, absolutely welcome, um, sharing the information. But also saying, you know, to, we, we welcome input, additional input. Because like I said, I hope you can see the reflection of all the input that has been received up until this point into this. Um, but as an opportunity to receive additional input, um, to, to provide, you know, a, a little bit, several days, um, whatever it may be, um, to, to be able to provide additional input. But time is of the essence and we do have an opportunity, like I said, this is perfectly imperfect, that i- if this, you know, if this does come to fruition, um, there, there is an opportunity then later, um, through the collective bargaining process to further, um, say, okay, thi- this adjustment maybe makes more sense or, or this one makes even more sense. And there's that opportunity then to, to process this additional. Um, not at this time. I, I did, in fact, just before coming into this, I saw an email from Kelly that, that, that asked if I could share it with her and, um, some of, I think that, that the team that she helps, um, that, that is on, with her and her team. So I'm going to, I just literally did this though in between coming to this meeting. So, um, I'm going to be happy to do that after this meeting to share that out.
I know you can't speak for Kelly or anything, but if we were to do something as to call a special meeting Monday, do you think you guys could get something together, maybe meet later in the week, this week?
And this is where, Brad, I'm, I'm just, I am hesitant because our resident, uh, expert is not here.
Right.
And I don't want to, I don't want to commit REA to anything, right, like, well, Jay Lee said that.
No, I do.
Exactly.
I didn't know if you, if it's a feasible timeline.
If it's for me, I, I'm always.
Twenty-fourth is too late. I mean, that we lose any, I mean, everybody's gone.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. You gotta get something done.
Can we, can we make a motion to approve it, contention upon, I don't know, twelve noon Monday, unless Dr. Wright would yet, give him a yea or nay by, in the timeline, rather than have a special meeting even. And then he could make the call that day, that hour.
And then he could make the call that day, that hour. I mean, Ron's not here, so.
I think I'd like to have a resolution to sure up.
Yeah, makes sense.
But.
Can I, can I just say, Mrs. Bozer, what I appreciate about what I'm hearing from, from our, our trustees, and again, I won't speak for anyone who hasn't already spoken, is the recognition of the sense of urgency, as well as the ability, if necessary, to be at the ready to take action even this evening. But to Mr. Lee's point, and we referenced, all the conversations that we've already engaged in, I think it would help us to, to continue along those lines. But to what Mr. Weber did reference, I think, as far as media. And again, this, this is first time for me in such territory of conversation, but I'm not sure if a motion could be made. Or, well, I would, I'd really love to, to get back to the, the conversation that we've already established, and I think that to Mr. Walton's question, we'll be in communication rather quickly.
Monday gives enough time for resolutions to be developed.
It would.
It gives a time for, some time for some meetings, some discussions.
I think we need to set a date.
Yep.
I do too. So that way, there's a timeframe.
But past, I mean, every day past Mondays, just.
I, I, I agree, and.
I mean, it probably should be Friday, but I think Monday's reasonable.
I don't think we can do twenty-four hour notices Friday.
Be in the word of order right now.
What, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Hopefully, the word's out, or gets out to the teachers, that this is being worthwhile.
Well, and I think that that's, I think that's important, you know, we, we went into, we, we talked Monday, but then really wanted to do a deep dive of, this is what it looks like. And then also did that not only with the representative from REA, but then also our administrative team on Monday, more of it generalized, and then say, okay, here, here's what it looks like shored up. And if you can imagine the amount of time that, that has gone into this, and I will tell you, it's not during the normal working hours. Because of the importance of it, I dedicated, and Karen has dedicated, an exceptional amount of time beyond the normal working hours because of the commitment we had in trying to fix it, because of the time, and the timeliness that it needs to be looked at. So like I said, I am willing to, to do that again, if, if need be, whether it's before or after weekend, if there are any questions, because of the urgency, I think, so.
So I'm hearing a lot of Monday, which is May fifteenth, so if we were to have a special meeting, I mean, do you feel like that would give you time to speak to people between now and then?
And would it be speaking to all teachers? Because, I mean, we aren't bargaining, I mean, what about teachers who aren't part of REA that aren't represented here, that may have feedback? I think it's probably important to provide just some information, like Mr. Walton said, to maybe the, to, all this stuff, because that's why we presented it also to the administrative team today, because they're, they're the ones that are in the trenches as well, with trying to hire, retain, and beg people to, to stay and, and to have faith that there's something coming. And so I think by sharing the information outward and just asking, you know, for, you know, any input, maybe by Monday morning even, so we could have, maybe clear my Monday, that if there is, you know what, that's, that's a great idea, that maybe then if there is something from what I'm hearing on Monday, that would give me even Monday then to, to try to, to further, you know, take further input.
My only concern with that is that if we put this out, because that is a lot, and I've seen it now twice.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be like a, this is what a schedule would look like.
Yeah, we need to close those doors.
Yeah.
Because I mean, you can easily go zero years at forty-three, two fifty now, and it'll go to forty-six, five, five years.
I think just the schedule and then the summary of, this is what the average was, this is what it would be under this plan. It's to, you know, improve and increment the years of service, collect, you know, fix the.
Just to be able to have a scale again, where you can look at it three years, and I will figure that's huge. Knowing that, you know, bargaining every year, I mean, those rates may change or depending on what kind of situation we're in, but it just leaves, it gives you that stability, knowing that I'm gonna get this, this, this.
And that's what I root for classroom teachers, is that in, in yesterday year, when they can see that, okay, maybe right now, I'm not making as much as I could in other districts, down the road, if I stay here, I'll be there. And, and or, I love where I'm at, it's not about money, and down the road, I'll be there.
I just love it, because, I mean, two thousand eight, when I started teaching, the starting salary for a teacher was thirty-two five. Where we're looking at now is.
And you even saw the last chart, two hundred and seventy-one teachers are affected for next year.
Yes.
The year after that, it's two eighty-five, so each additional year, it's gonna pick up a, a couple extra teachers in there that are affected and go up. I think Monday shows urgency to the matter. I think it also gives time, the last thing we wanna do is spend one point four million dollars and destroy a, a relationship. But I think if we can still spend amount, this amount of money and build upon that relationship, and it only takes a couple days, I think that's worthwhile.
And to Mr. Weber's point, if anything was to surface that I learned of, that Mr. Bozer or Mr. Scowf are too involved of, that would be juxtaposed to a Monday timeline, or surely.
So, yes, Monday fifteenth, or sorry, Monday, May fifteenth, five thirty, special session. Let us know if you can't be here, because we'll obviously need a quorum in order to vote. Also, just to the public.
Can we set virtual option up for those that can?
Yep, yep.
You can't vote virtual anymore.
I thought it was only on budgetary.
Budgetary. Tary item.
I, I thought you were.
I'm guessing this is qualify.
No, that was total budget, I thought this.
That would be a good supplemental.
That would be a.
Yeah, I, I was under the impression you couldn't vote virtual.
Yeah, well, let's find out if anyone needs that option.
We have a virtual policy.
I need that, okay.
Except for the budget.
It's a budgetary item, but it's not the budget, but I, that'd be a good.
I understand.
Okay, so if you do.
We'll find out.
Ask her.
We'll find out, yeah.
Ask her. Five thirty Monday.
Five thirty Monday.
Is there anyone not able to be?
I am not.
I can be here.
You can?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
I'll clear my calendar.
Thank you.
Well, and what I was wanting to say to the public, we're your representatives, so contact us if you have questions, concerns, obviously, central office is on high alert, but we are too. We're gonna need to know if there's anything that we need to know, as it pertains to this, this issue, so. Okay, anything else?
Still appreciate you all's attentive listening time.
I've got a couple more things before we, we do have.
Good try, Dr. Rice.
Stacy, Stacy got to attend the hundredth, hundredth anniversary, just tell a little bit about that real quick.
Yeah, it was great, so a lot of the dignitaries were there, Lieutenant Governor showed up, and she spoke for a little bit, Mayor Snow spoke, Luanne Spicer, my personal hero, she spoke, Dan Norris, a little bit less of a hero than what Luanne Spicer is. He spoke about being a student there, and being a teacher and a counselor there, and it was just fun to see kids playing kickball with adults, and the basketball team was playing basketball with the kids on the court, it just, it was a lot of fun. It was a gorgeous evening too, so.
And congratulations to Test, a hundred years, that's awesome. Also wanted to just report, we were, we had our board retreat this past Saturday. Thank you to Dr. Rice for facilitating that, and we have decided, moving forward to do exec sessions or work sessions in lieu of retreats at this point, so just wanted to report that out to the community. Also, several of us will be attending the Indiana State School Board Association meeting. I think that's Kristen, Stacy and I, is that right? And Dr. Rice, are you?
I was at one point, but unfortunately, I will not be.
We'll fill you in, so.
Mrs. Scowf.
We're gonna, that's very informative for just keeping us up to date on everything that's going on. Yep, Region six, so.
Huge slate about the Indiana session.
Yes, so it keeps us abreast, so, okay, anything else? Without further ado, I call this meeting to adjournment.